So our next item is the transportation efficiency and equal school day assessment.
Thank you, Board President Mark with board members. I'm going to go ahead and kick this off. Rob, if you want to go ahead and pull up the slides that you'll work through. So, board members, we're going to be talking today about work that started from, from, everything that I can gather, started in, maybe even before this, but, but, but at a minimum started in 2013, so eight years ago. And so I just would, before we get going, you know, I think that as we have started to announce this, this got some, some coverage in the newspaper this morning because we posted our slides. I just want to kind of walk the public and the board through how much work, effort and energy has gone into where we are today, which is a really great place, and we're almost there. So I know that there are lots and lots of people in, on, on our current team, on our current board, on previous boards, on previous district leaders that have spent a lot of blood, sweat and tears in this idea of, of the equal school day. So in April 16th, 2013, at the time, the Board of Education entered into an MOU with the BVSD administration and BVEA to talk about this idea of how do we use time as a variable and asset in the development of, at the time, what was called the ideal school day. So this became a big effort that was part of the success effect, which was the previous version of, of the current strategic plan altogether for all students. There was a committee formed, I think the term is a design advisory team to work through this idea of the ideal school day. Teachers, administrators, district staff, board members, lots of folks involved. This came back to the board in a formal memo in September of 2015, where one of the ideas in the ideal school day was a designate of length of school day by level for every school. At that point in time, the idea was, the, the idea was to begin implementation in August of 2016. So at that point, you know, continued to work, I think some more presentations. There was a superintendent transition, an interim superintendent. As I came on, on July, as part of my 100-day plan, I spent a lot of time engaging with our staff, our community. And, and time and time again, this idea of the ideal school day came up. And so we, we put that to the board to speak to in October of 2018. We brought in a work session where we talked about this idea that the ideal school day group had recommended a seven-hour day for elementary schools, recommended some other things. Board directed us at this time, okay, go work up some options for us to consider. As a reminder, board members, those of you that are on board at the time, in January 15th of 2019, we brought forward three options of where we could go in regards to this idea of beginning to align and regulate the amount of time elementary, middle and high school students were learning and really standardizing those instructional minutes. We gave several options. Option one, move high school start times back from, from where they were at the time to, to eight o'clock, and then the following year begin to start to align the middle school and high school times. Option two was to move the high school times to eight thirty, and then in the following year for elementary and middle school. And then option three was wait a year, and then in 2021, go ahead and make the change for the high school start times, elementary school day for a seven-hour day and align those things. At that point, the board directed us to go with option two. So in January of 2019, as board will recall, the community will recall, we began to engage our community on what, what would be the things that we would need to do to mitigate any of the concerns, but begin to start to deliver on this work that had been happening for almost a decade. We were able to do that, engage our community, have lots of good conversations, feel like that their input helped us make our plan stronger. Implemented late start times for high school at eight thirty, which by all accounts has been a great success. Lots of, lots of positive feedback there. And at that time, we planned to begin to plan for the 2021 year, school year, to do what we're talking to you about today, which is this implementation of the seven-hour elementary school day. March 12th happened in 2020, we ran into the pandemic, obviously plans changed. We presented to the board and to the public a lot of what you'll see tonight on May 12th in 2020. And at that point, we said, we're going to need another year to wait to start to move to this equal school day. We're going to try to, you know, look at some pilot programs on, and opt-in to busing, some RTD passes as opposed to running some routes in a way to kind of be more efficient. Many of those plans, and I'm sure Rob will speak to this, because of the pandemic, didn't come to fruition. But we've received some feedback that for some folks that, you know, this is, they didn't understand where this was coming from. And I think I want to share all this to the board and to the public to say, you know, we're really close on developing, delivering on work that's been hard work, that's been, been, been going on in this district for quite a while. And so, so for some folks, this may be a refresher, for some folks, this may be new. But please know and understand, this is not something that we developed in the past couple of months to bring to you. This is work that we've committed to, we're working to deliver on. And so we've got a lot of great information. Sorry for taking so much time to introduce this, but I thought it was just really important to set some context. So with that, Rob, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Dr. Anderson, thank you for that history. Really excited and proud to lead this work. I co-led the changes to the high school bell times with Dr. Crespo, and I have co-led this work with Robyn Fernandez, area superintendent of the East Network, who will be joining me here in just a little bit. You know, tonight, as Dr. Anderson said, we're going to be presenting our plan to provide equal instructional time for all students. It doesn't seem like there's ever been a better time than now to implement this in the 2122 school year, when we were looking for additional instructional time for our students. So with that, you know, for years, school start times, start and end times have varied by school and by level throughout this district, creating disparity through the system, an equal learning time really for most of our students, if you think about it, at the elementary level. So these disparities in start and end times have created inefficiencies in district-wide services such as transportation. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Rob and let her talk a little bit about the history and the progress we've made.
Thank you, Rob, and good evening, everyone. It really is exciting for me to be here this evening, talking with you about the equal school day, because I have been part of this conversation since 2014. So it's exciting to be with you this evening, talking about continuing this work. So as a reminder, when the ideal school day task force was created in 2014, that was co-created and co-led by both BVEA and school leadership. Because at that time, we were having a lot of conversation about guaranteed viable curriculum across the system. The truth is that a child in BVSD should not just be lucky to land in a school where they may have a longer school day than a student in another school. And a longer school day, as we know, especially at the elementary level, can add up to a differential of 13 school days. And the truth is, not only every student needs and deserves not only just a guaranteed and viable curriculum, but even more importantly, a guaranteed and viable educational experience, regardless of who they are and what school they attend. So the work of the task force went beyond what we are discussing this evening. So in the 2016 recommendations, they were not just about school start and end times. I think we could probably call that the skeleton or the backbone of the school day. But it also included recommendations about the teaching and learning experiences that occurred during the day. The good thing is that since that work was grounded in best practice, much of that best practice is still very current and is reflected clearly in our current strategic plan. However, the most foundational work of this is a movement to a standard length of school day at elementary. Because with that structure in place, we have the ability to implement the cornerstone to the strategic plan in a way that guarantees the same high-quality experiences for all students, regardless of what school they are in. So as Dr. Anderson said before, we know that we were able to implement a big piece of that work, starting in 2019, with the change in high school start times from eight thirty and the, and the change in high school end time to three forty-five PM. And so that was some significant progress, and we are excited to continue that work. So with that, I will pass it back to you, Rob.
Thanks, Robyn. Just as a reminder, in 2019, when we made the shift at the high schools, we made a commitment to you to come back with a plan to address this disparity in learning. So in 2019, the transportation, we assembled the transportation team to pick up this discussion, to develop and recommend school start and end times for elementary, middle and PKA levels. High schools were already set to provide that equal learning time and to standardize professional learning time for school staff as suggested by the equal, or the ideal school day task force. So school day schedules are strongly connected to bus routes, as most of you know. The group also worked directly with the transportation consultant, actually two consultants, to look for ways to make busing more efficient as we're working through this process. So as you can see on the slide, the team members that made up of the steering committee consisted of principals or APs from each grade level, the vice president of BVEA, and then leadership from district departments. Throughout the process consisted of four steering committees and one subcommittee meeting over four months. Next slide. We established the following goals at our first meeting. The first one was to standardize length of school day by level. Susan, do you want to click through those? Sorry. The next one was to align bell times to national research regarding adolescent sleep patterns. Again, we achieved this at the high school start time adjusted eight thirty. Design an efficient, affordable transportation routing system scheduled to align to the new length of day. Standardize professional learning time to occur outside the school day using a late start model. And then review and revise lunchtimes to provide students with a full 25 minutes to sit and eat. I want to talk about that just for a second. That has become more challenging than we anticipated. We have not met that goal. That is a goal we're still working on. A lot of our cafeterias are constrained by the size, so when we start thinking about providing that full 25 minutes to sit and eat, it expands our lunch period, so kids are eating as early as nine thirty, in some cases to two o'clock in the afternoon. So we're going to continue to work on that and bring that back to you, but we have not met that goal just yet. Okay, next slide. We use the following principles to guide our work. Develop a well-balanced day for students and staff. Consider the needs of elementary, middle and high schools individually as a system. Propose transportation recommendations that were cost-neutral or resulted in a savings as much as possible. And tonight, we'll talk about a plan that was a cost-neutral plan that we are presenting. And then consider employee negotiated agreements in making those recommendations. Robyn, I'm going to turn it over to you to cover this slide.
Sure, thank you. So in our never-ending focus on working to do what's best for students in every school across BVSD, we know that to achieve this, there are some very specific actions that are fundamental to continuing our progress on this front. So as Rob Price just talked about, first, a couple of years ago, we talked a lot about studies that indicated that our older students, our secondary students specifically, need eight and a half to nine hours of sleep and to not wake up before six AM if possible in order to account for their circadian rhythms. And fortunately, we were able to address this by starting our high schools beginning at eight thirty AM, and that supports that information. Next, what we do know is that both research and practice indicate that adding time to the school day and/or length of the school year can have a tremendously positive impact on student proficiency and future achievement in school and beyond. And we know by standardizing the length of the school day at the elementary level, from six and a half hours in some cases, in some schools, all the way to seven hours, we'll be able to achieve that as well. And finally, we know that in BVSD, we are very proud of our educators. They're skilled, they're dedicated, and that level of expertise needs to be supported and maintained. It does not happen just magically. So it's important for our educators to remain up to date on the best practices, and those best practices are inherent in our strategic plan. So as we continue to build upon the, the knowledge and skill base of our incredible educators, and as we continue to implement the strategic plan, educators need time, time dedicated to professional learning. And the equal school day provides a one-hour time, a, a late start on Wednesdays, dedicated entirely to professional learning. And so this late start will be, as I said, dedicated to continuing to develop the knowledge and skill base of our teachers. And we've been talking about this work, as we have been saying for several years. So seeing the equal school day work before you this evening is really exciting. And exciting to see not only the progress that we've been able to make so far, but the additional progress that we are on the brink of making in the near future. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Rob.
All right, thank you, Robyn. So as previously mentioned, one of our goals was to provide, to, was really to standardize the length of day at every level. So we've been able to achieve that at middle schools, K eights and high schools, middle schools were providing a seven-hour day. Kates were providing a seven-hour day. High schools, as you remember, were providing a seven-hour and fifteen-minute day. As you can see at the elementary level, though, we are not providing that. Right now, our schools range from six and a half hours all the way to seven hours and twenty minutes in your elementary school. So the difference in that, if you just compare a six-and-a-half-hour day to a seven-hour day, is eighty-six and a half, eighty-six hours of lost instruction time each year, or 13.2 days. You multiply that times a six or seven years, a student is in elementary school, they're missing a significant amount of time, and that's the inequities we've created in our own system that we're trying to solve now. So as we're looking to make this adjustment to, for elementary schools to a seven-hour day, all of our schools will still meet the minimum instructional hours. Elementary schools will actually have a thousand eighty-three, which greatly exceeds the elementary minimums. You can also see at the middle Kates and high schools, they also exceed the instructional time required. So this chart here shows you a two-tier bell time schedule. And I say two-tier because the way our transportation routing system works is buses go in, they pick up schools. Elementary students first, they drop off at elementary schools. Then they would pick up secondary students and drop off either at a middle school or a high school. The most efficient transportation system is a three-tier system. We've worked through a number of options, and we weren't able to get there. So we landed on this option, a seven forty-five AM to two forty-five PM. Those are bell times. High schools would remain as the cornerstone of this model, is at eight thirty AM to three forty-five PM. And then middle schools and Kates would be on another tier at eight forty to three forty. You can see on Wednesdays, as Robyn presented a little bit ago, professional learning time would occur on a late start model on Wednesdays. Elementarys again would start an hour later, so eight forty-five to two forty-five. High schools and middle schools, the same. So some exceptions to this that I want to talk about, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and anybody who's watching is on the same page. So Monarch Kates, Southern Hills, Brimfield High, no change in their bell time. And the reasons for that is the proximity of the K eight or middle school to their high school. We have to have separation to get traffic in and out at both the middle schools and Kates and their high schools. A Netherlands elementary school will stay at a seven-hour day, and they will see no change in their bell times. Again, that is due to the way they're routed up there. They, we've right now got them as a two-tier system with their high school. Gold Hill and Jamestown start times will not change. They will move to a seven-hour day. A reminder that we do not provide transportation for Gold Hill and Jamestown. Flat Hards and Foothills will go from eight fifteen to three fifteen. You'll see they're not on a seven forty-five tier. And the reason is, is because those buses right now go up into the foothills, pick up not only elementary, but also secondary students, and bring them down. And in order to do that and effectively tier those routes, we have to have an eight fifteen start time. BCSIS will be from eight to three, high peaks will be seven forty-five to two forty-five. Again, we do not provide transportation to those two schools, other than special education. But we do have to provide some separation in their bell times, just from, again, from a traffic standpoint, to get cars in and out of that site. And then Boulder Tech's bell time will end at three twenty. So I believe we've, I've covered that. So next slide here, real quick. So I want to talk about this, just so you understand the information that is being presented here. This slide shows the new AM bus drop-off times for each school and the change in minutes from the current drop-off times. So you'll see, let's use Birch as an example. Birch has a seven forty current bus drop-off time. They will be moved to seven thirty-five. So we drop off 10 minutes earlier than the bell time, and then our buses leave seven minutes after the final bell time. So Birch, for example, will only be changing five minutes. Some of our schools will start their days, currently start their days before eight. Those schools will see a small shift in the morning start time. Most schools, as you'll see, a change in start time of 15 minutes or less. Two schools' start time will shift by 20 minutes, and four will see larger changes, up to 60 minutes at Eisenhower Elementary. So the schools that are most impacted by this, if you look, Bear Creek, fifty-minute change, Eisenhower, I believe Columbine is also on there, and Mesa Elementary. The majority of schools, though, see a 20-minute or less change. Next slide. I just want to let you know what has happened since we discussed this topic last May. So late last year, we started to reach out directly to principals to discuss their change and hear any feedback that they had. I met with the principal advisory committee in November, and the feedback was extremely supportive. Transportation staff, specifically our Safe Routes of School staff, has met with principals of schools that are seeing the biggest schedule changes to understand what they think the challenges will be. Earlier this month, Dr. Anderson and myself met with the District Parent Council to get their feedback. Really, our update tonight launches our information campaign to the community, as Randy mentioned, on Thursday at five o'clock. We have a Let's Talk forum where we'll be presenting the same information. The goal really, just as a reminder, the goal of the Community Communications Plan is to share information with families and really to collect feedback on how we can support them with transition. So community processing will continue through February. We will collect that information. Staff will evaluate that feedback. We will report to the board in April is the plan. So starting in May, then we'll start putting those transitional supports for families in place. Bus routes will then be finalized over the summer with the new bell schedule that we talked about earlier, starting in August. So as noted, the communications campaign will launch this week with information being shared through BVSD's existing communication channels. Information will be shared and updated as necessary through the start of the school year. And then with a renewed push over the summer to confirm or move or adjust with any of the changes that we get. So we realize family schedules are built around the school day, and everyone's schedule is unique. I'm trying to build a system that works individual, or works for a whole, for our entire community. We want to hear from the community about their anticipated challenges and their thoughts about the district and how we can support them. Community schools, Renee Williams and Bill Sutter, they're both eager to support the change with childcare and enrichment programs. We're already having those conversations. Food service is already looking at how we can provide breakfast to more schools, if that has helped for, for families to get out of the house in the morning. A letter will be going out to families and staff tomorrow to explain the change and invite them to provide feedback versus PR or online forum. And then we will ask them also to submit questions to our Let's Talk broadcast. So here are a couple of examples of the questions that we will be asking. These are just high-level questions. Question one, which BVSD childcare program will you, might you need or want before school on late start Wednesdays? And then with an earlier start time, you think your child will purchase breakfast? So more questions will be part of the survey, but we'll continue to do that outreach to support our families. So other cost savings options we're, we're looking at with this equal school day. And understand, we're prioritizing our work. We've got a lot to do already. Some of this work, for example, the pilot with RTD, that work has been put on hold this year due to the pandemic. And I'm not sure we're going to be ready to pilot that next year. So more to come on that. We'll continue to communicate with the board on that messaging, on what we're doing. Consolidating stops in neighborhood, and again, the thought there is, is if we can reduce the time that kids spend on the buses, the better. So we're going to continue to look on that, look at consolidating some of those stops. We will communicate that to families, if that's something we move forward with. Re-evaluating walk distances, the school bus stops and ride times. Again, this is something that as time has become available, or comes available, we'll continue to look into this as we move forward. And then evaluating load counts to identify opportunities to consolidate routes. That's really a cost savings measures. We do have some routes out there that are below 50% capacity. So how can we consolidate that with other bus routes to try to save some money? And again, any money we save in transportation is less than transfer from the general fund. That is money that goes back into the classroom. We did roll out the opt-in program for bus service this year, and it has been successful. We have ran into some challenges for families that might not have internet access. Access, so we'll continue to figure out how better to support those families as we move forward. That is something that I want to continue doing in the 2122 school year. And then other cost savings measures that we are committed to look at, for example, we've had a number of hazardous routes that were deemed hazardous years ago. Now there are safe ways to get to school because of sidewalks, crossing lights, et cetera. So we'll continue to look at those, and then there's, of course, other alternative transportation options. This piece right here is secondary to what we're really trying to do, and I want everybody to understand this. What we have presented tonight is a cost-neutral solution, and that's what we committed to the board, was bring either a cost-neutral solution or some cost savings. We want to continue to dig into this. These are options that we will look at. So that concludes our presentation, and with that, we will open it up for discussion.
All right, thank you so much. Let's start with Richard again.
Thanks, Robyn. That's a lot of information to digest, you know, it's a, a little bit overwhelming for me right now. I'm looking at the guiding principles, and, and the real purpose of this is design more to have an efficient and affordable transportation routing system. It seems like, you know, the way you were explaining it. And I'm wondering what the increased school day time will do for student achievement, for children, and, and that. I know that it increases the number of minutes that kids are going to be in school, obviously. But does it really help? Will it really help the kids learn better? If, if they have to be at school earlier and all of that. And, and the reason I'm raising those particular concerns is that, reading the emails, you know, there's been a lot of emails that we've been receiving because of the equal school day. And I believe that Um and I believe that uh of all the emails that I've received and I've read, all of them are against it except for maybe one particular email. Um for a number of reasons. And uh and uh uh in looking at who was in the committee, uh I didn't see a lot of, I didn't see any parents that were in that particular committee unless uh the principals advisory committees were uh populated by parents also. And that's where the parental input was coming from. Uh so, you know, just just to say that, uh I guess the concern that I have is is uh uh I see, uh at this point, I see a lack of community parental involvement in designing this equal school day process. Uh so uh is there going to be an opportunity or time for people to actually input, I mean, parents? To actually, you mentioned that earlier, but is there going to be a time for them to actually input? And is that going to change anything, or are we all set and this is the way it's going to go?
Yeah. Right. Robin, will you talk a little bit? Uh Samara did a wonderful job, and I know I've talked to several principals that have done a wonderful job. What could they do with another twenty minutes or thirty minutes of a school day? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Thanks, Rob. I'm happy to. So what we hear consistently from many educators is that there's just not enough time in the school day to do everything that we know kids need. So we do what we've always done. But what we all, what we also want to do during the school day is make sure that we address not only core subjects, but we also have to make sure that we are addressing uh social emotional needs. We have talked a lot in previous years about the need for a uh a sufficient lunchtime and uh exercise and recess time. We also know that we need ample time for either intervention or extension for students academically in order to meet their individual needs. If they are struggling and need time to catch up, we know that they need more time. If they are students who need extension and greater depth uh of contact to content, that also needs um additional time. Uh we also value in our community the ability for all students at every level to engage in specials, to have the opportunity to have art, music, and PE. And part of what we were able to accomplish with the original ideal school day work, uh if we recall, is the ABC special schedule, which was able to take art, music, and and PE all to the same number of minutes, valuing each of those students. Uh and so really, it's a comprehensive approach, knowing that kids need more. A complete education that focuses not only on academic excellence, but also supporting the needs of the entire child, including uh community and social emotional learning, takes more time than what we usually feel that we have during the day. And so this really addresses that. And the truth is, some of our students in our district already get that. They already have a seven-hour day or even longer. And so the core of this conversation really grew out of the fact that, wow, some students in our district have that already. And other students in our district, based on the mere fact of which school they happen to go to, don't have the same opportunities in terms of amount of learning uh each day, each month, each year, and then over the course of their K-five experience. You know, if we think about thirteen days, a possible thirteen days per year times uh six years, K through five, that's, you know, what, nearly a third of a school year differential? And so part of the goal is to make sure that every school, every child has the same opportunity for the same excellent uh opportunities across the system. So that really was where the idea um originally came from. Hopefully, that clarifies.
Robin, thank you. And Richard, I want to uh talk a little bit. We looked at a number of options as we were working through uh with the committee. And, you know, one option had the students uh getting out of school much later. And you know, the thing that struck me was is our our leaders doing this work, who talked about how learning drops off significantly after two o'clock in the afternoon with elementary students. And that's why everyone supported is, you know, these these young learners are vibrant in the morning, and then the later the day goes on, it they drop off significantly. And I and I know that this is a huge change for six of our schools, um specifically for if you if you really dial it in. But when you look at the schools and our start times right now, we have a lot of schools that are right around at the start time that we're talking about. So although this seems significant for those schools, uh you know, I I will say, you know, we look back, I look back personally to the high school bell time change. And man, that was tough to do, but what a benefit we've provided those high school students. And I think over the six or seven years for an elementary student to get these additional instructional minutes, uh I can't think of more important work that I've been a part of. So not sure I've answered all your questions. And then I guess on the parent feedback, the engagement that we plan over the next two months, that's what we want. We're not asking for engagement on the actual times. We're asking for engagement on how we can support them. Is that through school-age care? Is that by providing breakfast? Is that after-school programming to help those families that might not be getting off work at two forty-five in the afternoon, et cetera? It's putting those things in place that we can support our families as we're moving forward.
No, I hear you, Rob, and thank you for for that. I I, you know, I'm looking at your slide seven, I think it is, when you're talking about the current status in elementary schools. There's a uh Pioneer Sanchez and Nederlander at seven hours or longer. Uh is that the only three schools that are seven hours or longer? You know, I'm not sure uh in terms of the elementary schools.
Eee, that sounds about right, Richard. I would, I need to dig into that to make sure, but I believe that is correct.
Uh so, you know, there's only three elementary schools that are seven hours or longer, and now we're going to equal day. Uh now all the schools will have seven hours.
That's correct. Yep, except for high schools, seven hours and fifteen minutes. You know, that you, one of our principals had commented that, you know, a lot of times without a seven-hour day, this was a principal, um and I know he won't mind if I say his name, Brent Caldwell, principal of Metal Arc, who was the principal at Heatherwood, um who had a seven-and-a-half-hour day. And he had commented, the first thing that drops is social emotional learning, uh because the state dictates everything else that falls into the school day. And I would think after going through this pandemic, we would all on this call prioritize uh social emotional learning over a lot right now. And in order to get their instructional minutes are going to be required.
Yeah, and and, you know, and reading some of the uh arguments that I've been reading is that a lot of the social emotional stuff actually takes place at home before kids grow up. If they're given the time allotted to be able to eat breakfast with the the adults with the kids and stuff like that and send them, send them to school, you know, and uh uh that's where a lot of that is occurring. Uh I'm not arguing against the equal school day. I'm just making, raising some points, you know, that I think we should, we need to consider as we as we move on this a little bit further. Uh the uh and then if I look at some of the schools that are on 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 uh seven-hour days already, I mean, I mean the schools that that are receiving seven hours of instruction a day, you know, we're we're still struggling, and we're still trying to help them out a little bit more and stuff like that. So uh but at any rate, uh I I just thought I'd raise the points because I think it's uh uh needed for uh, you know, our community at large, people that are listening, understand that uh, you know, what what is the real reason why we want to do this equal school day?
Wait, I want to make sure that that is very apparent. This is not about saving the district money. This is not about finding transportation efficiencies. One of the goals was, we were going to bring you a plan that would be cost-neutral and provide equal learning time. And if I remember correctly and digging through the archives, the reason the ideal school day didn't move forward back in two thousand sixteen was because of transportation costs. So I just want to make that very clear, that we have worked extremely hard. We use the eight-thirty start time as the cornerstone for high schools. So after we received public feedback, et cetera, you know, we originally came to the board and we said high school should start at nine. Working our way back, once we got public feedback, um due to athletics and activities and other things, we went back to an eight-thirty, and that eight-thirty bell time is what is driving this elementary start time. But again, based on the research that we've done, uh the research isn't telling us otherwise that seven forty-five is too early.
Well, I'm in total agreement that we have students that we that need, and we should be able to provide for them more instructional time, not less, but more instructional time. I'm completely a hundred percent in agreement with that. Uh uh and uh but then there are schools that don't require that. I mean, there there are, there are children that are perfectly well the way they are, you know, so I guess that's, you know, I'm trying to figure out how do you, how do you reach a balance in terms of what we're trying to do so that uh uh we can keep everybody happy?
Richard, if I may, I I appreciate the comments certainly. Um just just a couple of thoughts. Number one, um as we start to engage our community, just like we, you know, and and I anticipate a similar path to when we did this for high schools, right? We are going to hear things. We've already heard things from our community members that we know that we have to mitigate for. For example, I know that there are some folks that when they um when they filled out open enrollment, um and we think that there's about forty or so families where this is the impact, um where they may have opened and enrolled because of the start times. But we need to, we need to work that out, and 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 we've already started to work on that. But I would argue um and share with this board, there isn't a school in this district that doesn't have achievement gaps and doesn't have kids who need more instructional minutes. I I mean, there are gaps in all of our schools, right? So to, and and it's not just instructional time, and I think you've hit on this point, Richard, it's what you do with it. Well, I feel that this work certainly complements the work um that is that is planned for the strategic plan that you'll be hearing more about here within the next couple of weeks in regards to how do we roll out scope and sequence instructional models, MTSS programs, formative assessments, those things. As we come and try to recover from a pandemic, what are the systemic things that we need to do as a school district uh to make sure that each and every kid, regardless of what happened this past year, gets a fair shake and gets the opportunities to relearn? So it's not just instructional minutes. I do think that this is um this is work that we want to honor and continue to honor, and it does fit in nicely with the work that we have planned. Um but uh but but certainly, we know that that we have to listen, and we have to figure out if there are things that we need to mitigate for, you know, how do we do that? And that's what our team is is planning to do.
Well, I I hear you, Rob. And and I I I'm bringing it up because I was around when the ideal school day was being introduced and stuff. And I and I recall, I recall very vividly the pushback that we got, you know, with the ideal school day. And uh and I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that we weren't very transparent with our community. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, uh is that it? Richard, can I move on? Awesome. Okay. Kathy?
So I just have a couple of quick questions. I just want to clarify that what was written as the headline in the camera is not where we are. Um we are probably going to go forward with this because, as you said, you don't need a board vote. But we have lots of steps until we get there. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, absolutely, Kathy. I think that um as we start to engage, if there if there are some unforeseen circumstance or issues that we feel is a is a um is a showstopper, we we don't see that today, uh but but certainly we would bring that back to the board. Um, you know, this is not a, we've decided this, and we're just telling you about it. We we are following the path and the direction that we've been on for this seven-year journey, right? And now some time and opportunity to to listen to hear, um what are the things that we could do to mitigate the concerns out there? Because you know, there there are pros and cons in anything you do, but the benefits of of almost, you know, you know, eighty to ninety instructional hours and and the thirty-six hours of professional development that that will be able to guarantee for all of our teachers in our district is um K-five. I I mean, I think that those are are certainly huge benefits. So um but but this isn't a, hey, board, this is what we've decided to do. And and board members, you all know this, that we always work as a team. We try to check in with you along the way, um feel like that we we have been given the direction to move here, and feel like that it complements the rest of our work incredibly well.
So it reminds me of the whole movement about five to eight years ago called More and Better Learning Time. Do you remember that? And it was like, you know, you can't just add time. It was what you did with the time, and it sounds like you have a plan for that. So it's cost-neutral? Is that what you're saying, Rob, that we can do all this and we can add all the childcare that everybody needs, before and after-school care and all that, and it's cost-neutral? That, I find that a little bit of a stretch, but maybe it's
No, 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 no. And I, and maybe I'm overselling that a little bit, Kathy. We don't know what the needs of our families are. So no, those costs are not included in this. When we look at what the increase of parent costs will be compared to this little bit of savings we'll see in transportation within our departments, that we're, that's what we're looking at. What we need to understand from families, though, is what do they need to be put in place to help them? So those costs, childcare costs, et cetera, are not in this plan. Um and that's what we need to hear uh and collect that feedback and plan accordingly. So
So it's too soon to say that we could make a commitment to be able to address all those needs till we know what they are?
Fair statement, yes.
Sorry, is that the puppy in the background? Then we did get an email that um I guess I hadn't focused until tonight, that you wanted to do this late start for every school. But I don't know if you saw the email that Fairview has already incorporated their own professional development, and this would mess up their block schedule and all of their planning that they put in place. So I would hope that we wouldn't necessarily make it one-size-fits-all when it comes to the professional learning time. Is there flexibility to look at that?
It it would be a one-hour late start, and uh, you know, principal of Fairview was on our working committee. He was part of that recommendation. Um as as was BVEA was part of that recommendation. So principals know that's coming. Um but that would be our plan, is that would be a district-wide uh one-hour late start for all schools.
So what I'm hearing is no, there's no flexibility?
No, but when you start making these changes within schools, and that's what the the challenge is, it throws off our transportation. So if one school says, I'm not going to do it, but another does, then they're not on that tier. Therefore, transportation costs go up significantly. If you think about it, a a bus that's driving down the road, every one of those buses costs us eighty-three thousand on average a year. So when I throw them off a tier, I've got to put another bus. And right now, I'm fifty-nine drivers short. So if you know of anybody that wants to drive a bus, please let me know. But even if you said, I'm going to give you more money to let this school do this, I can't hire the drivers right now, Kathy. So
I would just encourage you to to think about being a little flexible. I get what you just said, but I thought that the email that we got was very well thought out. And maybe the principal signed on, but I don't know if the principal signed on and then agreed to this new plan. So I'm just encouraging you to think flexibly.
Here's what I say.
One-size-fits-all for everybody.
We're we're going to let, we're going to certainly listen, right? And and to the extent that there there are folks that want to, that that's what this part is about, we'll listen. Right? I think what Rob is sharing is that, you know, you can't have a, you know, some of these things, when you scale, right? There's certain trade-offs that you have to make, and those are just things that we'll have to consider, but certainly we'll listen. Um I've received some of those emails as well, so um we'll dig into some of those issues.
And I have a question I should have asked earlier. Are high schools going to be able to go back to doing more activities like choir and those kinds of things in a couple of weeks? Or where are we on on that? Because you said activities were coming back. Is that part of the plan?
Yep. Now, every school should have a plan for that, and I believe that um that that some of that started this week. Uh we could certainly give you all more information. Um but schools are certainly working. Um I know my daughter has got, has gone back and is is doing some things um at the high school level. So uh yes, you know, those things are starting to to begin to pop up.
It would be great in a couple of weeks, Rob, just to get an update on all the things that we're bringing back, because I think that's important for people to know.
We can do that.
Um, well, thank you. I appreciate the opening it up to listen to us and and, you know, eighty-six hours is a lot of time that we could be helping our students get caught up. So I'm excited about that part.
And multiply that by six.
Yeah, no, I know. So it's just figuring out these, if we can afford it, and meeting all of our community's needs will be a balancing act going forward. Thanks.
Okay, uh Donna?
Yeah, I want to um thank all the work that's gone into this. Thank everybody for putting it in, but I I I understand all the parent concerns. And having read all the emails, I I do think we have to involve the parent community. I I started thinking about this as I read the emails, looking back even eight years, talking about the um the the best school day for kids and and how it's progressed. But but I think a lot of parents right now, they're they're in the middle of COVID fatigue and Zoom fatigue and every other kind of fatigue you can put in there. And and then this just could be the straw that And, and then this just could be the straw that breaks the camel's back as far as that, they, they want to have the input. And having taught in a classroom for more than 30 years, quantity versus quality. I, I, I do see the importance of giving our kids more time, but sometimes the little kids, they get tired at the end of seven hours. And, and seven hours is a lot for them. I know we're going to have a lot of catch up to do. But I, I think we've also got to talk about that quality part versus quantity. And, and sometimes it, it may be as, some things that we need to change like class sizes. The instructional time doesn't have to be as extensive if sometimes we can have those smaller groups and smaller sizes. There's a lot to consider here. And especially the, those parents that are concerned about the daycare costs of finding someone to get their kids to school and then having to change it on a Wednesday schedule. I, I hear, I, I just want, I, I've told so many parents, tune in tonight and watch because they'll have more updates, more answers. But I think tonight is, is not just more answers. It, it's more for parents to think about and put those questions forward and their concerns forward. I don't have any questions, but that's what I needed to say. Thanks.
Okay, Kitty?
I really appreciate you sharing the research on, you know, kids learning, young kids learning dropping off after two o'clock. I think that's important to keep in mind. And I really like that the kids are going to, every child will have a seven hour day, which I think is also important. But I also understand the concerns of parents. You know, anytime you drop some kind of change on them like this, it can be very upsetting. You know, like we're talking about schedules of taking kids to school and picking kids up. And I understand all of that. But I do think we need to look at what's in the best interests of the education of our students too. So thank you for all the work you've put in on it. I do think we need to consult with and listen to our parents. But I think we need to, once we've figured out what's the, going to be best for kids, that we go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I would have loved this if this had happened 30 some years ago. Because I had a kid who got up with the chickens and didn't go to school till 8:45 and she was practically ready for lunch, so.
Okay, Lisa?
Thanks. So I, I think I want to start by acknowledging that for some families, this alleviates burdens related to before school care. But for other families, this is really adding additional obstacles. As a parent at the school experiencing the single biggest change, we're moving by an hour. Personally, I, I'm not excited about this. This is going to be really difficult for my family. I think having said that, I do tend to think that this, after an adjustment period, this is in the best interest of the district and of each individual school. And I, I think the first year will be tough. I think maybe halfway through and by the second year, it'll, it'll start to, start to normalize. I'm glad we'll be finding ways to engage and to get feedback over the next week. I think it's clear that people feel like they haven't had an opportunity to express concerns and to engage. Rob Price, I think part of what I'm hearing is that it's difficult to really appreciate the challenges and logistics involved with making sure all of the pieces of our district puzzle fit together. So I, I'm wondering if we're thinking about the way that this, these changes impact not just our school schedule, but also after school activities and sports and lunchtimes and so on. With, you know, sort of keeping that all in mind, could you maybe speak a little bit to, to folks who are saying, why can't it just be 15 minutes later or 20 minutes later or whatever the case is at elementary school? And, and what that impact really looks like?
It's, it really, when you think about it, when a school bus drops off at a particular school, we have to have about 45 minutes on average for the time we drop to get to the next school. And that's to pick up students along at each stop and then to drop. So in order to run a tier, if you think about a school that would start at 7:45, we're dropping at 7:35, so about 45 minutes before that, we're picking up those first, first students. So every, anytime you make a shift, so if you were to say, okay, let's go elementary preschool, we want them to start at eight o'clock and go eight to three o'clock. Everything has to shift by that same amount. So high schools would have to go at 8:45 to four o'clock. And that is not a recommendation I would be willing to make just based on what we've learned at the high school level. And then middle schools and, and K8s would have to make the same adjustment. And it's because of the, really the number of elementary schools on that first tier compared to the number of middle schools and high schools we have in the district. But it's that 45 minutes logistically that we have to get from school to school that creates those tierings. And you really, again, we want that same, that one bus to be able to serve multiple schools to be as efficient as we possibly can.
Okay. And I think one, one concern I'm hearing a lot from folks at my school is how this impacts green routes to school and ability to walk and bike in the morning and the winter. If you've been to schedule, and I'm hearing online, that lots of folks are pretty accustomed to the schedule that, that all of us will be moving to and clearly are finding ways around those, around those challenges. And I'm wondering if you have any suggestions or ideas or, you know, tips, explanations for ways that folks who are suddenly experiencing a drastic change in start time and, and, you know, imagining what that looks like in the winter, what can we do to make sure we're not all having to drive in every morning?
Yeah, and I, I want to say that I've gotten a lot of the same feedback that probably the board has received. But I've also gotten feedback from working parents that to parents that have to be at, at work at eight o'clock, this is well received right now. But in, in regards to your question specifically, Lisa, you know, I think of the three block challenge, for example, where parents can drive, they park three blocks away and they can walk their students to school because they're parking earlier, or they're getting to school earlier and they still have to get to work. There's still a lot of opportunities for families to, might have to drive, might have to get a little, a little bit earlier to get their kids there. We have more daylight at the end of the day to safely go and get their kids to school. So, you know, there, I think there's a plenty of options that are safer routes to schools. Team's going to be working on, they've already started working on this. If you remember, I talked about that three block challenge. That's something we rolled out earlier in the year. So I still think there's a lot of opportunities for families to be outside and side, not have to drive to work, not have to be on a bus, et cetera. And we'll continue to look at those over the next couple of months and roll out a plan for families in May, if this is how we move forward.
Thank you so much. Well, I, I think the seven hour school day makes a lot of sense. I understand the reasons we're shifting to a shared start time across elementary schools. I think it's clear that we have a lot more work to do with our community to make sure that they're on board with us. And, and I appreciate everything you've shared tonight.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I do have a few things. One is, and maybe Robin can speak to this, is, so not only are students in school a differing amount of hours, but teachers are too. So teachers on the same contract have a different school day. That is correct, right? And so it would seem to me that this would, this would also be equitable for them.
So you are right that every, every teacher has the same contract as determined by the negotiated agreement. So you are right, there are currently differing amounts of times that teachers in different, in different schools do teach. That is true.
Thank you. And there's two other short things. One is, I am really thrilled to see this coming to fruition. As a member of District Parent Council for many, many years, we've discussed this at least four times over the years that I can remember. And then you were there again last night or whenever they had their last meeting. So I'm glad to see it moving forward. And then I'll just share a story. So my son went to Crestview and during, it was an eight o'clock start. And during the flood, Crestview was closed for an extended period of time, longer than any other school, and they had to make up the time. So they opened 10 minutes earlier for the rest of the school year. And the staff decided to keep it that way because they liked it so much. So they, they only have to, they're going to, you know, five more minutes, they'll be opening up. But my point is that that extra 10 minutes was a huge deal to them. And they liked it so much that they stayed with it. They have a 7:50 start ever since the flood. So I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, like Stacy, I've been hearing about this equal school day for a very, very long time. And thanks for all your work putting into it. I think all the questions I had were answered. Thank you for not trying to get rid of fifth grade instrumental music right now also. That was a nightmare. Okay, any other questions or final thoughts before we move on to the next item? No? Okay, great. So we have a legislative update, although we just went through the supplemental. Does anyone have anything else to add? No? Okay, that kind of was the legislative update. So our next item are action items. And I'll read the list from consent grouping. 7.1 Personnel Items. 7.2 Approval of Minutes, January 12, 2021 Executive Session. 7.3 Approval of Minutes, January 12, 2021 Special Meeting. 7.4 Approval of Minutes, January 12, 2021 Regular Meeting. 7.5 Approval of Minutes, January 19, 2021 Special Meeting. 7.6 202021 Revised Budget. 7.7 Acceptance of Donation, New Vista High School. 7.8 Career and Technical Education Concurrent Enrollment, Colorado Department of Education. 21. 7.9 Identity and Access Management System Class Link. 7.10 Grant Information Technology, State Connecting Colorado Students Grant, Colorado Department of Education, 21. All right. Are there any items a board member would like to pull? Not seeing or hearing anything. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Kitty, seconded by Kathy. All right, Laura, would you, oh, does anyone have any questions? Okay. Laura, do you mind calling the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Jeff Hart?
Yes.
Mark Wiss?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Queenie Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. And then we're up to our last item, which are two policy action items. These are policies that we reviewed at our last meeting. The first is 9.1 Adoption of the Board Policy, KF, Community Use of Facilities and Notice of KFR. And the second is 9.0, I think we'll do it, are these, is this a group? Oh, it is a group. 9.2 Adoption of Board Policy, KFB, Operation of Childcare and Enrichment Programs and Notice of KFBRR, the regulation. So first, before we start discussion, we need a motion to approve by Kitty, seconded by Stacy. All right. So any items that anyone would like to pull? Or we can go into discussion? Should we go into discussion? Yes? Okay. Questions on the revisions that Kathleen made since our last meeting?
No, I, I just want to thank Kathleen for some of the clarifying language that she put in on category two, category three, category four, and category five.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so hearing none, shall we call the roll to adopt policies, KF and KFB with their associated regulations?
So move.
Garcia?
Yes.
Jeff Hart?
Yes.
Mark Wiss?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent? Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes.